I'd like to welcome our guest to the Washita Parish School Board meeting, come any time that your schedule will allow. Mr. Mekus, your call roll, please.
Mr. Como.
Here.
Ms. May, here. Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Mr. McCoy.
Here.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Mr. Manley.
Here.
Let's stand, please, for the pledge of allegiance by Board Member Debo Graves.
Salute pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our invocation be done by Board Member, Mr. Harold McCoy.
May we bow, please. Most holy and heavenly Father, again, we are so thankful and grateful for this opportunity to even to Lord be able to open our mouths and to say thank you. Your word says in all things to give you thanks. We thank you now for this day, this hour, and for this moment. We thank you for your son, Jesus. Thank you for what he wrought on the cross of Calvary. We thank you for the Holy Spirit, our earthly intercessor. And we pray, Lord, that you would bless this meeting, that you would let it be what you would have it to be. We pray, Lord God, for each and every person who is here today under the sound of my voice. We lift up the administration of this entire school district and every person who works in the district. Lord God, as we began this new 2223 school year, we plead the blood of Jesus on every student. We plead the blood of Jesus on every employee, every parent, every neighborhood. We just pray that as bus drivers pick children up and drop them off at school then pick them up again and drop them off at home, that you would give them safe passage both ways. We just plead even now, Lord God, that you would keep not only our children and not only our employees safe, not only their parents, but keep all of us safe and secure. We lift up these school board members, Lord God, who are here today, that we would do those things that are pleasing, those things that are right in your sight. And we'll just say thankful now. We'll say thank you, Lord God. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Board, look down to the approval of the minutes. On July the 12th, 2022, need a motion in a second. Does it move?
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Propose no? Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. We need to amend the agenda to add items number five and down to permission to be at item number four. So I need a motion in a second to approve the amended agenda.
I saw a move. We approve the agenda.
Second.
Yeah, motion in a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Propose no? Motion carries. Now we need a motion in a second to approve the full agenda.
So move.
Second.
And a motion in a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Propose no? Motion carries. Personnel report, Dr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. We have an interim assistant principal that will be serving at East Washita Middle School. Actually, has been serving, Ms. Kim Cormier. So, Kim, congratulations for this interim placement here. And at this time, Mr. Hicks, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Coker. Moving down to business, item number one. Approval of the People Progressive Plan changes. Mr. Todd Geis, Personnel Director.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Board, a board to come to you for our annual approval to any changes to the People Progression Plan that is due to Louisiana Department of Education by September the 9th. Our People Progression Committee, which consists of representatives from every school, at least one, met on May 6th. We've been waiting for the template to come from the state. We received it in the last month, so that's why we're bringing it to you now. In your folders, you have a summary of the changes. There were not many to the People Progression Plan that we're proposing for you to approve that we can send to Baton Rouge. Those are for you. From your mail out, there were a couple of additions we wanted to clear up for elementary that we've included in this handout in your folder. So, the high school subcommittee of the People Progression Committee recommended just a couple slight changes in wording. If you look on your handout there in red, the committee is recommending to strike the policy on transfer students that mentions a comprehensive examination in each subject for which credit is sought and change that to students transferring into ninth and 12th grade from non-accredited schools and seeking a Carnegie unit and a course, must take a comprehensive exam in each subject for which a credit is sought with a 70% or above or score below a proficiency level of 67.5. The committee is recommending 67.5 because that is the lowest D in our district. Just trying to bring the People Progression Plan in line with our grading scale. So that was the first thing the high school committee recommend. The second one was verbiage change on page 21, trying to strengthen the process when a student may want to drop out of school by giving them more options. You can see there the red that is stricken. That is being removed at our recommendation. That is the old wording. And the new wording down at the bottom in black there is with prior parental consent. If a student is under 18 and student consultation, students will be referred to Louisiana Delta Community College. Prior consent includes consultation at the student's home school with personnel qualified to provide academic and/or career technical education guidance. Following consultation, students will be provided documentation confirming that the student has been advised, which shall be provided to the child within attendance, so that students may be given access to HIC waiver form to exit the Washita Parish school system. If you flip over on the back, the middle school is proposing to add this course, which is a robotics beginner course, seventh and eighth grade, for one Carnegie unit or one high school credit. And they are proposing to change the placement test from a benchmark testing type of test to the eye-ready diagnostic three. Those are the only changes in middle school. And then the elementary changes, they are listed for grades K through two, grading symbols A, B, C, D, and F, and all major and minor subjects in conduct for all four grading periods to determine the final grade. Grade one, grading symbols A, B, C, D, and F, and all major and minor subjects in conduct. Must pass reading in math with a final grade of C or higher or one other minor subject with D or above. And then grade two, the changes were just like grade one, changing the grading symbols to A, B, C, D, or F type of reporting. So, those are the changes that we are proposing from the People Progression Committee. The directors in charge of high school, middle, and elementary are here. If you have any direct questions about any of those, certainly they'll be available to ask those questions. But those are our recommendations to the board for changes that we send to LDOE.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Mr. Manley, we have an item signed up for item number one?
Yes, sir. We have Ms. Caitlin Ross would like to address the board.
Okay. Okay. Approval of item number one. Need a motion in a second to approve this item?
I saw a move that we approved the People Progression Plan change.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Propose no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number two. Approval of creation of position and salary schedule of Director of Construction and Maintenance. Dr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. I know that many of you are familiar with the fact that Mr. Kenneth Slusher passed away about a month ago. And in the absence of Kenneth being able to do his job, Mr. Hemp Hill has been kind of stepping up and stepping in to help us out with the construction part. So, Stephen's position right now is Supervisor of Maintenance. Okay? He has been helping us with construction for quite a bit. What I'm asking the board is to absorb Mr. Slusher's position. And in the process of absorbing that position, creating a Director of Construction and Maintenance. And in doing so, we would also be moving, Mr. Slusher was in charge of nurses. We would be moving nurses to the Director of Safety and Security. And I would ask that we would formulate that director position, again, with the added part on their job description of being in charge of all the nurses in the district. We probably have 32, 33 nurses. Marcia, you can help me out here, or Mr. Fremont, plus several PRNs. So, it's a big task. It's a big job. And we feel like it would really be served under our Safety and Security Director anyway. And so, the creation of, what I'm asking right now, is that you would agree to create the Director Position of Construction and Maintenance.
Okay. Mr. Manley, do we have anybody signed up for item number two?
Ms. Ross, would you like to make a comment on that item?
No, that's it.
Okay. All right. Item number two, we need a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion from the board?
Just want to ask, Dr. Coker, to understand that as Director of Construction and Maintenance, then that we will not be replacing a...
Supervisor of Construction and Nurses.
We won't be replacing.
That's correct. We would absorb that position in the process of creating the director. But, and I'm not going to ask, or I'm not going to inform, I'm not being assumptive here, but I want to make sure that y'all are going to approve this position. And in my superintendent's report, I will tell you who I have selected for the various interim positions. These are all interim positions because about probably April or May of 2023, we will have to open the positions for people to actually apply.
So that was my question. There is going to be some help for Stephen because that's a full-time job.
Yes, it will be.
There's more to it. Okay.
Yep. Thank you. I think that's what I was asking.
Any more discussion from the board?
In doing this, we will actually save money.
Yes.
But we'll be able to add money to the employees.
To the ones who are being named the interim directors, yes. It'll be a director factor instead of a supervisor factor.
Any more discussion from the board?
Good questions.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Propose no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number three. Approval of job description for Director of Construction and Maintenance and amendment of job description and salary schedule for Director of Safety and Security. Mr. Todd Geis.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Board, just piggybacking off of what you just approved, you have two copies for your approval of the job descriptions of the positions Dr. Coker just mentioned. I'll start with Director of Construction and Maintenance. We took two job descriptions, basically, since that is what is happening here, which was a maintenance supervisory job description, and then the construction supervisory job description, combined them into one. So that is one. The other one is for the Director of Safety and Security that Dr. Coker just mentioned. This is an existing job description, and all we did to it, if you look on one D under Functions of the Director, we added what Dr. Coker just had you approve, which was overseeing, supervising the Washita Parish school system, school nursing program, and school nurses. So that's the only addition to that already approved job description. The Director of Construction and Maintenance is new, and then there was just that one addition to the Director of Safety and Security job description that this board had approved some time ago when that position was last held. So that's what I'm asking for your approval.
Okay. Mr. Manley, we got any visitors on item number four or three? I'm sorry.
Ms. Ross, would you like to make a comment on this agenda item?
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve the job description for Director in Construction.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion from the board?
Just one piece of additional information. Ms. Marcia Hughes was Mr. Kenneth Slusher's administrative assistant. Marcia did a lot of work with our nurses. So, Ms. Hughes will continue to be the secretary, same office, but will become Mr. Fremont's secretary as this moves into that particular job description.
Any more discussion from the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Propose no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number four. Finance Committee Report. Mr. Todd Geis, Finance Committee Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Board, I think this is my last agenda item, and I'll get out of the way. The Finance Committee, since our last report, has had two meetings. Met on July the 7th and July the 25th. The July 7th meeting was a special call meeting in which we recommended to the board the approval of pay raise proposal. This board took that up on July the 12th and approved that for our employees. So our regularly scheduled meeting was July the 25th here in the boardroom. We had three items on the agenda. The minutes and the agenda have been attached for you to review. We got a report or a presentation that was attached by Ms. Mekus on the 2223 consolidated budget presentation. That was just a report to the committee. And then our next item was a discussion of a salary study and analysis for all employees. We had felt like for some time the committee agreed that it was time to really take a deep dive into our salary and compensation package for our employees. So our intent is to, as a Finance Committee, go out and seek a third party to come in and do a complete analysis of our compensation package for our employees, all employees. So we really have an idea of where we stand competitively with other districts around the area and like-sized districts in the state, and in some employee categories where we stand with competitors outside the school district here locally. So, that is our intent, and we will bring that report back to you at a later date.
Todd, you happen to know what the timeline is on that?
No, sir. Ms. Mekus and Dr. Coker and I will be getting with that third-party person here identifying that soon and getting that started. So. All right. And then item number three was a discussion of plan for installation of air conditioning on school buses. Mr. Boyd brought this to the committee. That plan that he presented is attached. The committee, we had a lot of discussion on this. The committee had some concerns about committing 322,000 for this fiscal year. And after a lot of discussion, we decided to recommend to the board that the board commit 150,000 this year, concentrating on our longest routes first at air conditioning our buses. That was passed unanimously to present to the board today, and that was my initial plan. Since our July 25th meeting, though, we've had some new information come to light that I think is going to help us out a lot. And I'm going to ask Mr. Miller to come up now to give a report on some ESER funding update.
Good afternoon, Mr. Hicks, Board. So, I'm going to back up just a little bit to about 11 months ago. I got a phone call from Mr. Manley. He had a few projects that he was wanting to inquire about ESER funding for. One of his biggest concerns was putting air conditioners on buses. So, after some discussion at that point with Dr. Coker, we put together a preapproval request for the ESER, which is required for any capital outlay purchases. So, that request was denied. They basically said, you've got to prove to us how putting an air conditioner on a bus is better for COVID, because we don't believe you, basically. So, give us some science and we'll approve it. So, over the course of the last 11 months, of course, Mr. Manley regularly asked me, where do we stand on that? Have you made any new developments? On and off over that time, I've spent a lot of, I won't say a lot of time, but when I had time, I would do some research and look and do some research and look. And after, I don't remember if it was before or after this last Finance Committee meeting, but again, at Mr. Manley's urging, I kind of gave it one last stab and did find a, I believe it was a University of Michigan mechanical engineering and aerospace engineering professor, I believe, who had written an article based on research that he had done. And there are some certain conditions that you can put an air conditioner on a bus that actually does help improve. I think the main thing it does is it helps to pull the droplets out of the air, which is one of the big concerns with the spread of COVID. So, I resubmitted that change here a few weeks ago, and it has come back with the preapproved status with ESER. So, that's a great thing. The exact way I put it in is up to 200 buses. I don't think, we'll probably end up doing that many, but up to 200 buses with a cost of about $2 million. And there are some variants you can have on that. I think those preapproved requests are actually good for up to 40% over what you requested them for. So, that doesn't mean we're necessarily ready to go bid this out and do it. We had just done a budget amendment with ESER that we had already submitted before that came back. So, we will have to do another budget amendment with ESER that adds that budget line item in there for us to be good. But, that preapproval is essentially, means that it's just a checkmark when it gets put in the budget as a line item. So, it's really not a concern. We should see that as soon as I'm able to do another budget amendment. So, that's it. Hopefully, don't know what the timeline will be. Obviously, that's a big job that'll have to be bid out. But we do have the ESER funds that are going to help us cover that.
And just to add to what Clint is saying is that, you know, we were looking at a four-year plan to do this, a six-year plan, an eight-year plan. I am so happy to say that we feel like we can do this within a year and a half or two years. So, we are extremely happy for our kids, for our drivers, that we're going to be able to use this money for that reason. So, I have to say this also. Y'all, the people at the state, they want you to show them what it is. Had Clint Miller not gone online, done his research, done all of the stuff that goes along with this, we probably would have gotten our third rejection on that. So Clint, thank you for spending that time and that energy to, you know, to find what they were looking for on that.
So, we'll be proceeding with that. I think you have permission to be at item, and we'll start that process here later in the meeting. So, those were the three items we had at our 25th meeting. Our next scheduled Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for November the 17th here in the boardroom. So, that's all I've got, Mr. Hicks, as far as the Finance Committee report.
Okay. Mr. Manley, you have the visitor that signed up for item number four?
Ms. Ross, would you like to make a comment on this particular agenda item?
Okay, thank you. Okay. A motion in a second to approve the Finance Committee Report.
I saw a move. We approve the Finance Committee Report as presented.
Any discussion from the audience? I'm sorry, the board?
Dr. Coker, from the air conditioning, are going through ESER funds on air conditioning. Is that something we need to address now? We're going to do it later on in the board in the meeting, or?
Y'all are addressing it right now.
Okay.
When you vote on it to approve this, then we will...
That was my intent. I want to make sure that was the case. I just had one question concerning the deal with what from May 24th of the school system, we currently offer the driver's ed at a cost of $295?
You're asking about driver's ed, Harold McCoy?
Yes.
Is Mr. Boyd in?
Mr. Boyd, is that $295 for driver's ed?
Right.
Yes.
And in order for, because you said the state no longer offers the skills test?
Why don't you come to the mic, Skeeter?
Yeah, that's...
The state no longer offer skills test for driver's ed?
No, they don't. And that $295 is very cheap for driver's ed. It's up to $450 to $500 for private.
Okay.
So, it's all basically gone private.
Okay, it's private. And so, you're recommending that we offer the skills test as well?
I do.
At an additional, what, $60?
Right. We have instructors qualified to give that skills test.
So that's going to bump it up to $355?
Right.
Okay.
If you add that.
And so, compared to others...
Where they can come back and take the classroom with us, and then they can come back and take their skills test along with that, and that'll complete the whole course.
And compared to others, this is less?
Yes, a lot less for our children.
Okay, okay. I just want to make that clear.
I think we have five instructors now across the parish. We're getting two new driver's ed cars, I think, end of the week. So, thank y'all for that.
Okay, all right.
Skeeter, are those driver's ed instructors full-time employees, or they do other teaching responsibilities?
They're full-time.
Oh, they do driver's ed?
No, they have coaches and teachers.
Okay.
And just one other question. When do they do the driver's, the skills test? Is it during regular school time or after school?
After school.
Okay.
After they complete the whole course, the classroom phase, 30 hours?
Yes.
And then they're eight hours driving, then they take the skills test. That's the third and last phase.
So, $50 will go to the teachers?
To instructors, right.
To instructors for after school, and then the rest maintenance?
Right.
Okay.
Any more discussion from the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving down to item number five. Consideration of Policies. Ms. Jennifer Nugent and Dr. Coker.
Good afternoon, Board. If you will look at your policy folder, on the left-hand side, you should see a list of 15 policies with the name and a short description. And on the other side, the actual policies. And I'm bringing these policies before you today for your consideration. So you'll have a chance to look over these before the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. And if you remember, several months ago, I mentioned to you that with the changes at the state legislature and the changes in law, get ready because you're going to be seeing quite a few policies that are coming out based on the change in law. And so, this is what we're going to say is round one. That's round one right there. If you also remember, back a couple of months ago, you voted to put in place a Policy Review Committee. Now, board members, let me say that one of the major jobs that you do as a board is to pass policy. And so, the reason we're giving these to you a month in advance is for you to go through them for any questions that you might have. But we also have this Policy Review Committee that's job is to go through them word by word, sentence by sentence, making sure that, and remember, policies are pretty much 90% law, and 10% may be some tweaking in there that could happen within the district. But as the Policy Review Committee, we'll be going through these very thoroughly also and bringing a report to you and maybe even a recommendation to you. Mr. Hicks and I, and I thank Ms. Nichols, who will be chairing the Policy Review Committee, Jennifer Nichols right here. I've included in your folder the folks that who will be serving on this committee for the 2223 school year. It'll be similar to the Finance Committee in the fact that each year, there may be different administrators come on. There may be different in this particular committee, parents come on. So, the Policy Review Committee, as approved by Mr. Hicks, will be consisting of Reverend Harold McCoy, board member, Ms. Sherry May, board member, Mr. Charles Wright, who's principal at Washita Parish High School, Ms. Jane Biggs, who is principal at Woodlong Elementary School, Director Supervisor Jennifer Nichols, who is also our Director over Middle Schools in Title II, and Supervisor Jennifer Nugent. Jennifer handles all of the paperwork that we do with these policies. So she is the first point of contact there. And our two parent representatives will be Ms. Ashana West, who is a parent at West Monroe High School, and also Mr. Ben Hackler, who is a parent in the Sterlington Schools. So those eight members will be composing the Policy Review Committee. And I will tell you, this committee will be held just like we do Finance Committees or board meetings. It will be open to the public for any questions that may come up on, you know, various policies that are out there. And so, this committee, now that you've gotten the first set of the new policies that are coming out, will be meeting within the next week and a half and starting to go through all of these also. Our hopes, because, and this is kind of a work in action because this is new for us, but our hope is that we will be able to get back to the board members any recommendations, changes, or what have you that comes from the Policy Review Committee to you prior to the next board meeting, when you will actually vote on the various policies out there. If there is something that comes up in the course of the discussion, we can always, unless it is time-sensitive, we can always hold that policy out for more consideration, for more discussion, before we bring it back to the full board for a vote. So that's kind of the process that we will be going through. And I know Mr. Hicks certainly appreciated And I know Mr. Hicks certainly appreciates Ms. May and Reverend McCoy serving on this committee to to represent the board. So that is the the rest of the story from Ms. Nugent here.
So these are the policies for consideration today. And we'll bring the recommendations or ask for your approval at the next board meeting.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Manley, you got any any visitors for item number six?
Ms. Ross, would you like to make a comment on that particular item?
Dr. Coker, would you like to address that?
Yes, just like our Finance Committee, it comes from recommendation from the board president is who makes the final recommendation. That he has to, I mean, we we check and we vet everybody out, but he has to put his blessings on it after it's after they're done.
So you said that y'all vet everyone out. I have some issues with a couple of the people on the board that I have had tried to have addressed last school year with my son, and it was not taken care of. Nobody wanted to, they told me there was nothing y'all could do about it. And I talked to a couple of people about it, and they discriminated against my son. They held him in a room, locked in a room. Ms. Biggs, this is Ms. Biggs did, and nobody handled that. So I don't feel like she would be a great person for that. And so I was just, that's why I was wondering who picked those. Because you did, you vetted these people, you looked at if there had been anything filed against them or anything like that. You did.
I didn't.
Yeah, I think we should.
That hadn't come before me. I, Dr. Coker, have you?
Yeah, I'm I'm aware of the situation.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so.
And Mr. Pade, I know that you handled that also, or you worked on that?
Yeah, he didn't handle it. There was nothing handled. They told me there was nothing that y'all could do. And that basically what happened to my son was, he he actually laughed at me and because and said, well, if in my world, if he lived in my world, then, you know, he would understand where I was coming from. But there are different policies and programs that y'all are involved in, and those are some of the requirements. But just so everybody knows, policies are not laws. They're not kinda laws. There's no way that they are laws. So we can also waive some of these policies. I don't know if y'all have looked at the Department of Education. They have waivers for a lot of these things that are, you know, that a lot of parents don't agree with. And so y'all have not done any of the waivers. Y'all have not tried, I guess that's something y'all don't feel like we need to do, but a lot of the parents do.
And they were more than welcome to come to our committee meetings when we talk about the various policies that are out there. Yes.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving down to item number six, financial report for June 30th. Do I need to vote on that? No, it's just a review.
Okay.
Okay. Financial report for June 30th, 2022, Ms. Mekus?
So before we go on, we don't have to vote on that, Jerry, as far as a new committee?
No, that's just.
It was an appointed one. It was appointed by?
By Jerry.
Yes.
Yeah. Be glad to put it up and let y'all vote on it, though, if you want to.
No, you don't.
It's only for consideration.
Okay.
And you wanna make sure we're following a protocol on that.
Well, I done looked at it. We we done got that straightened, yes, sir. Thank you. Ms. Mekus, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Mr. Hicks. Good afternoon, board. You have before you the financial report for the period ended June 30th, 2022. This is also the end of our fiscal year, the 2021-2022 fiscal year. So we are not 100% closed for the year, but we are getting there. So what you see is is kind of a work in progress, but I would say it's 99.9% there. We're still making a a few journal entries here and there. And of course, at this time of the year, we still have a few invoices that are coming in that may have, we may be waiting on from items that are reflected in June. So for our general fund, you'll see that we're ending the period with a net operating surplus of $67,000. What we had budgeted was a balanced budget. So I would like to point out that that is .04% difference than our budget, and that is awesome. And that takes everyone from board members, directors, principals, teachers, everyone doing their job to keep us in line this way. You'll see District Number One, M and O, in the next column. We're ending the year with $27.39 million in fund balance. And that is also relative to the adopted budget. We have the 1968 sales tax and 1995 sales tax. Just a reminder, those are sales taxes dedicated to salaries. The 1968 sales tax is the 13th check. So you'll see the fund balance in that account only reflects the accounts receivable that we had outstanding for May and June, where the 1995 sales tax is the 14th check. It's distributed in December or November. So we have six months of collections in that account. So that's why the the fund balances differ a little bit. West Washita sales tax, we're ending the period with 19.8 million, and that is a little bit higher than what we entered last year. We are, we do have funds set aside in that sales tax that were budgeted to be spent on the completion of Bowley. We are very quickly approaching the completion of Bowley. So those funds that were not spent in June will of course be spent as we go through the next couple of months to complete construction on Bowley. And that was 3.5 million roughly that was budgeted to come out of the West Washita sales tax to complete that school over what insurance paid, which basically covers deductible and upgrade and finishes from the original 1960s materials to today. If you'll look on the second page, the last column, you'll, I just wanted to point out, there is a negative amount in the centralized printing of $106,000. This represents billing that we have sent out. So as we receive those payments back in, as as people return to the schools and they start sending that money back to us, that will zero out for the centralized printing as it is a a fund that balances out at the end of each year. Basically, we pay the cost of operating the program. We send out the bills that cover the cost of what we spent. If you look on the third page, down at the bottom, last column, you'll see that the 2019 storm damage is in the negative $983,000. That is due to the Bowley reconstruction. That is part of what will be covered out of the West Side sales tax. So we have yet to do those journal entries to get that expense. We're trying to collect the expense altogether in one place. But at the end of the year, we'll transfer that negative amount over to where it's actually being paid out of on the West Side sales tax.
So you're looking to zero out?
Yes, sir, it will zero out. We won't, we won't report a negative. We just wanted to collect so we could see in total the cost of that rebuild.
Right. So it's $983,000. Is that what it come to?
$983,000 is what we had spent as of June 30th, over and above what insurance paid.
Insurance paid, that's what I was, that's my question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Threw me off for a second there. Then if you'll look on the last two pages, this is where we take the general fund and the M and O sales tax, and we give you a three-year comparison to kind of give you a little more information on these two funds. If you'll see with the general fund, revenues and operating transfers were at 103% over prior year. M and O revenue, operating transfers were at 113% over prior year. For expenditures, general fund, of course, we were up 103. We're up 103 in expenditures also, and that's mainly due to inflation. I know whenever we talked about the budget at the end of the year, I had told you things like the cost of fuel doubled last year. What we spent on fuel for the 2021 year, we spent twice as much on the 2022 year. And those are things that we do try to foresee. We do try to budget, and we set funds aside to make sure that those, that we're able to cover those things. If you look at the M and O sales tax, you'll see the revenue being up 113%. That is directly related to the increase in sales tax that we saw last year. For the current year, it's not looking so rosy. Where, so last year, we budgeted 4% at the beginning of the year, and then we came back and we revised the budget when we saw that collections had had stayed up during the year. This year, we received collection reports as of Friday for the month ended June 31st, July 31st. And we're at about 2%, a little less for the current year. So we're gonna continue to watch those very closely and be very conservative with our sales tax projections as we go into the budget for the next year.
Would you say we projected for next year 4%?
Last year, we projected 4%.
Have we made a projection this year yet?
The, what I have the budget on this year, what I brought to the Finance Committee was based on 2%.
Okay, so that that's in line with what we're currently saying, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, because that that number will fluctuate. But I just wanna make sure y'all are aware, we're not gonna see any more 10, 13, I believe the year before, 16% increases in sales tax. As long as we're not negative, we're still up that that 16%. We're just not going any higher at the moment. So what we're looking at this year is just a, just a normal inflationary year of the the 2% is what we're looking at in our budget.
But we've taken, we've taken it into account. I guess something that's been on my mind, we take it into account that if we purchase new buses or if we retrofit the buses that we have, at some point in time, adding the air conditioner is also gonna increase the cost of fuel because it will increase the use of fuel. So you're, we're anticipating that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Those are, those are things without a hard cost. As I'm working on the budget, I make a list, and, you know, this item's up and this item's down. But it may be that we have ups and downs that all are really in the same, like the cost of the bus fleet. We may have some costs that go up. But then when we put new buses on the, in the fleet, our maintenance cost goes down a little bit. But when we put air conditioners in, it's gonna go up a little bit. So so I do take those things into consideration. And I talk with Skeeter when I look at that. And just like with any other director in their program, I'll kind of talk to them and and get an idea of if there's anything that I need to consider whenever we're going into the budget.
Okay. Ms. Mekus, the board has that percentage policy on the general fund balance versus I think our total expenditures or total, am I trying to say budget? Total budget?
Fund balance, yes, sir.
Balance of the whole. What is that percentage relative to that 23 million?
So the board policy is 10 to 15%. And given the increase at the beginning of the year, we were a little over 15%, but given the increase in expenditures that we've had this year, it brought us right into that 15%.
15%?
Yes, sir.
That's, that general fund balance and MO balance is probably the largest I've seen in our school system in a while.
Yes, sir. Also, with what we've seen over the last couple of years, I think it's more important than ever that those fund balances be healthy, that we're not reactive, that we're able to take our time and to weigh things out and plan and make decisions because we we have that fund balance there that allows us to operate without having to go into a state of emergency for any small change.
With the cost of everything going up like it is today, I think Harold brought up a good point about gas. It's good to have a good balance like this to fall back on in case we need it.
Yes, sir. And we had projected an increase in fuel cost. Wasn't expecting it to double, but but we did project an increase. So the the entire increase doesn't, didn't affect the budget because we had budgeted for an increase.
Right, right. I just wanna commend, you know, the administration from the U and those who serve on our our budget committee for the job that you do. A lot of times, we hear a lot of negative, that people don't realize what goes into all of this to get us where we are, so we can be comfortable financially. And if there's a hiccup, that we can absorb the hiccup without, you know, frustration or panic. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I I would like to to point out, I don't do this by myself at all. It takes the entire district, the board, the superintendent, definitely Mr. Geis with staffing, because that is, the bulk of our budget is in salary and benefits. So with his staffing, it allows, allows Washita Parish to have a balanced budget, to operate within a balanced budget. And I do thank principals and directors every chance I get for them participating in us as a whole.
Right.
Staying in line with our budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Manley, you got any visitors signed up to speak on item number six?
No, for Mr. Hicks. I think Ms. Ross left, and she was the only person that had requested any comments on any of the items. So at this point in time, we have nobody.
Okay. Moving, item number six, we need a motion and a second to approve the financial report for June 30th, 2022?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion from the board? No more discussion? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number seven, name architect for Sterlington High School East Side Bond Project, Mr. Greg Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. I want to bring before the board a request to name TBA, Tim Brandon Architect, as the architect for Sterlington High School. They've been working with Mr. Thompson, the principal.
Elementary.
Pardon me?
This is for elementary.
Elementary.
We've already named the high school.
He said high school. No, this is high school. This is high school. We've already named elementary. We named the elementary last meeting.
We did. I, you're you're right, I apologize.
Dr. Coker, I didn't mean to trick you in front of the board here.
Anytime.
I do represent the Sterlington area, gotta stay on top of it.
And doing a mighty fine job of it.
I appreciate that, Dr. Coker.
Don't brag on him. Don't brag on him. Now, back to my original comment, this revolves around naming the architect. It's probably the first time you've been.
That's my first mistake in eight years now.
I can recall in eight years.
That's your first time admitting. Thank you, Dr. Coker. But back to item number seven, I'd like to bring before the board naming the architect for Sterlington High School. We also named Sterlington Elementary at the last meeting, which happens to be TBA also. So they are handling both projects for elementary and the high school. I will say this, Mr. Thompson, the principal at Sterlington contacted me several months ago, probably a year ago. And of course, he was all excited about the bond proposal being passed and wanted to do everything he could as a principal to really jump out there and get a good start on it. So I told him, go ahead, start working with TBA, that I had chosen TBA as the architect. But we never had brought it officially before the board. So I think Tim and Clint have done a great job working with Mr. Thompson, and they've got a lot of things already done. It's just a matter of officially appointing them as architects. So hopefully, we can get started on that, actual doing some bidding in the next few months on that job. So we're excited about it. So I'd like to bring before the board a recommendation to appoint TBA as architect for Sterlington High School.
Okay.
I hope you get a second now.
I got a second right here. Hey, this is my second.
Right here.
We got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, well, Mr. Manley, do we have a visitor that signed up for item number nine?
No, for Ms. Sheeter.
Seven, I'm sorry, I'll get my number straight.
We do not.
Nobody signed up, okay. We got a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. We went down to item number eight, Construction Renovation Products Report, Stephen Hemphill.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks, board. In your booklet, you'll find some tabs. The first one is Tag Two with Architect Alliance. The projects they have ongoing at this time is Washita High School, Alternations and Editions is still in the design phase. Crawley Elementary School Reroofing, it's in a design phase also. Squart Slower Elementary Roof, still in the design phase. Item number four, the Woodlong Music Band Room, we're actually meeting there tomorrow and going over a punch list to make sure that all this is taken care of. uh, taken care of at that project, so, uh, that should be coming to an end. Uh, and then number five is just, uh, some of the storm damage we've had two years ago, it's been ongoing. And you see the schools and, and some of this is due to, uh, maybe not getting the right metal to build the gutter system that's on each particular school. So, uh, that's where we are with Architect Alliance. Um, with TBA, we've got Bowley Elementary, uh, punch list items are still being completed. Uh, the asphalt parcel lot has been poured as of last Friday. I think they spent the weekend striping. Uh, Ms. Bates has gotten, uh, some landscaping and some sod being planned from the front. I think we're going to be ready for, for school to open up on the fifteenth. West Washita, uh, we're hanging exterior lights in the ag building, uh, installing mechanical exhaust systems in the ag building, uh, installing electrical cord grills in the ag building, uh, installing existing, existing studs walls in administration area. Uh, rising restroom, uh, the tile is in, everything is being completed on these bathrooms. They're in the cleanup stage. Uh, they got stalls up. I think they were trying to finish up putting, uh, soap dispensers and that sort of thing. They cleaned up the hallways, getting all those back, so that should be ready for school to start off. Um, the last one I have is starting at the middle of school. We had a meet night there last week. Uh, they're still on schedule. Uh, they're pouring concrete every week. I think it's every Wednesday and Fridays when they pour in concrete. Uh, couple of weeks, they're going to start hanging steel, so anybody that travels one sixty-five, they're going, they'll see something happen. They'll see a building going up. Uh, then a few weeks later, they'll start laying the blocks, installing the door frames and, in the area. And then, uh, they got plans to go ahead and do the, the main water line that runs all the way around the campus. So they can have that for the contractors to use for mixing mortar and that sort of thing. That's all I have for the construction project. Y'all have any questions, I will try to answer them.
Well, on the Sterlington Middle School project, I would like to kind of let the public know, I've had a lot of comments about on the campaign trail when the school's going to be finished. And I was at that meeting that you were referring to this past week and told them the contractor and the architect, Ross Gregory, uh, right now the tentative date is, uh, maybe December of next year. Uh, possibly earlier, but, uh, won't make any commitment on that until down the road, see what the weather does. But at this point in time, the tentative date for completion is December of, of next year. So hopefully we'll be able to, uh, get the school completed by that date and get, get students in it, so.
And that will be December of twenty twenty.
December of twenty twenty-three.
Stephen, the punch, punch list on, on Woodlong, that, that meeting's tomorrow?
I talked with Brian today and he said that he would call and let me know to set up the meeting tomorrow and I don't have the time yet, but I did talk to him this morning.
I, I will be out of town, but there, there was several items that I had sent him pictures and videos, I'd like to make sure that that's taken care of. Uh, I seen something in the email about the building warranty. The building's been built a year. I don't know the, um, I don't know when you actually start the warranty.
Well, Elma can address the, when the warranty actually starts, when we took the building over or when we make final payment or, I don't know when the actually warranty will start. I'm assuming when the building is turned over to us and when the warranty starts.
I, I'll get where you want, but after this, there was a couple of flood options and then, uh, on the, um, the storm, OPSB storm damage on the list down here, um, I know some of these projects probably are not listed, but there was supposed to be an awning for, to redo the awning for the bus side of Pinecrest, the drop-off side. I just want to make sure that hadn't been dropped off this list.
The insurance company looked at that and they said that that wasn't due to any type of storm. Uh, if there's any repairs that need to be made, then we'll, as far as maintenance wise, we'll technically look at, see what we need to do. I don't know, other than maybe some lights under there or?
Well, several leaks, major leaks in rainstorms that was causing issues.
Yeah, I know me and Bobby Jones is here, we, we looked at that with the insurance company and the insurance company, uh, wasn't covered on the, any of the storm damage stuff.
Okay.
Any more questions for Stephen? Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Moving down to valuation of bids. Items one, two, and three, music instruments.
Mr. Hicks, Dr. Coker, board members, what we have, uh, presented to you in your packets and you'll see on the panels, we did ask your permission last month to go ahead and award, uh, the lowest responsive bidder for the Chromebook cases. And a panel of five scored those and you'll see the individual prices, um, on the sheet that I provided for you. And that has been awarded to a company by the name of Ibenzer. And they were not the lowest in price, but the other ones, uh, were either more or they did not send a responsive bid. They did not do it in the right format. So that has been awarded and those have been placed. The next one is, um, music instruments and we have, uh, there for you, Matt's Music and Music and Arts and Wooden Brass Winds, three different companies. All of them will get a piece of the pie, all of the ones that bid. Um, but the largest one, of course, is going to be Music and Arts. Um, so we are asking y'all's permission to award these, as you see on the sheet, to the three different responders. Some of the items were not bid on by anyone. We will be able to get those on an individual one-to-one basis that the schools are needing. And the last one is the library floors. That has been, that bid has been, uh, completed. And Doopie Flooring is the lowest responsive bidder, but only by three hundred and sixty-three dollars. Joe Banks is the next one, uh, but your lowest responsive bidder for that one is Doopie Flooring. So we are coming to you asking permission to award these according to the notes you have there in front of you.
Is that more than one library?
Yes, sir. That is, uh, seven school libraries that we're replacing.
Okay. This vinyl flooring or carpet or what?
We left it to the principal, carpet squares or vinyl, uh, planks.
Okay.
Some did, you know, it's different by, for each individual school.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve items one through three on your, only permission to bid, evaluation bids, I'm sorry, one, two, and three?
So moved.
Second. Yeah, motion and a second.
Next, I'm seeking your permission to bid a few things. Uh, we can take, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Mr. Manley, we have a, anybody signed up for?
Mr. Hicks and Mr. Noah, we have no further comment cards turned in for the rest of the meeting.
I know, but Mr. Manley, I got to ask that on every item.
I'll be glad to answer it on every. We have no comment cards at this point in time.
Thank you. All right, well, uh, we get, we got to get these items one through three. Do I need a, I need a motion in a second? We got a motion in a second, right?
Yeah.
So any discussion from the board? All right, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Now we're down to item, uh, permission to bids, item one.
I would entertain y'all take these all at one time.
Okay.
The only caveat that I want to add is the waste treatment replacement is Calhoun Elementary School and Central Elementary. Didn't want it to be confused with Calhoun Middle. They are both the elementary schools that we are doing those for. And, um, the parking lot, um, is a rigged street across from the administration building that will add parking for, uh, the administration close to the tennis courts in that general area. So we're asking for both of those. The law did change August the first and the bid law prior was thirty thousand dollars. Anything over that had to be taken to bid. Louisiana has changed it to sixty thousand, so some of the things you may see less items coming before you and/or some of the items that we've got permission to bid may go underneath that sixty thousand dollar cap, which, um, when Mr., uh, Noah gave me that information, I did backflips down the halls, so uh, I'm in traction right now. It's a joke, y'all. Okay, so if y'all will take these all together, I would appreciate it.
Well, I'd like to talk about the bus driver air conditioning for a little bit, if you don't mind. I know it's kind of a new item that was kind of thrown on there. I want to get a clarification on exactly what we're doing and what direction we're going, because we do have the ESSR funds available now for that. It's got two thousand dollars. I'm assuming that's per bus, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, do we, I know, do we talk about like two hundred buses, uh, Clint? Is that kind of what we're looking at?
That was the number I put in the, the, for the preapproval. I think the, the plan that was discussed with the finance committee was for a hundred and fifteen, three, I believe, over how many years. I put extra in just the cover of it and we needed extra. We didn't have so bad.
So we do have ESSR fund approval for up to two hundred buses?
That's right.
Okay. So we're looking at, we're going to buy the air conditioner with ESSR funds for two hundred buses, give or take a few, uh, two thousand dollars, uh, air conditioner and then also ESSR funds will cover the installation. Because during my previous discussion on this whole issue, I think Skeeter determined that it was going to cost fourteen thousand dollars per bus to completely air condition a bus, which I'm assuming two thousand of that is for the actual air conditioner itself and twelve thousand for the installation. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, and I, and I specified the preapproval for, for should be, the fact that we can do a forty percent over on that preapproval without having to re-ask.
So we'll have enough money on ESSR to take care of what we need to do and we're looking at around a two-year time span to get all of them done? Ballpark figure, is that kind of?
If not quicker, we'll, I mean, that's correct.
I don't know. I, I know at one time Skeeter said something about Currys can only do so many, uh, during a time, a week. How many did it go to do a week? Two a week? So it's going to be over a bit of a two-year cost, uh, process for Currys.
But we'll start the process in the next thirty days. We will put it out for bid.
Perfect.
And start that. You, we would have a number of it already have air conditioning and I'm assuming the new ones we're purchasing would have. So maybe the two hundred is going to get us fairly close to taking care of our fleet.
Right, right.
Okay?
On parking lots, are you asking for both an asphalt bid as well as a white rock bid on the three?
Yeah.
I do have a question for clarification and it's questions for Clint. On the bus air conditioning, I know we've gotten preapproval, but we don't have actual approval.
That's right. Maybe we should just put it in a budget in the next amendment that we could bid. Uh, with, with a pre, a preapproval that essentially say we should rubber stamp it and put it in the budget. But we do, to cover ourselves, we do need to get the budget, get it in the budget amendment submitted and approved prior to going forward through the bid. So I think we're asking for permission to bid a little early than we're ready to bid it, but just give the likelihood to do it as soon as we get that amendment committed and approved.
Well, based on your experience with the ESSR fund approval, we haven't had one rejected yet since we've got the prior approval, is that correct?
That's correct. And this last one, this last amendment, uh, they, they approved in about three weeks. So, uh, can't, can't promise they'll be that quick on the next one, but they're pretty quick on that.
Okay.
What's the estimated, what's the estimated cost per bus?
I put, I put in the, the, the preapproval request, ten thousand per bus. The numbers that Skeeter had brought on his, on, on theirs was about fourteen. Um, but we really felt like when we did it, how we're going to get better pricing.
Yeah.
But that too, that, that ten thou- ten thousand per bus, that's two hundred buses, um, with the forty percent over, we're actually, we can get up to the fourteen, uh, if we need it.
Okay, any more questions? Mr. Manley, you have anybody signed up for item number ten?
Uh, Mr. Hicks. We do not, we do not have anyone, uh, willing to participate or make a comment on this particular permission to bid item.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. All right, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, board, our next meeting is September the thirteenth at twelve o'clock. Dr. Coker?
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Uh, board, thank you for allowing me to create the Director of Construction and Maintenance. And so, uh, what I'd like to do is to kind of tell you who I have selected for these various interim positions. And it'll be actually three interim positions that we are feeling, filling at this time, with the understanding that these jobs would come open in either April or May of twenty twenty-three. So my Interim Director of Construction and Maintenance is going to be Mr. Stephen Hemp Hill. Stephen, congratulations for that. Thank you for what you've been doing already. Our Interim Director, he's moving from supervisor. We've given him nurses and we've, we've added, uh, more, uh, work on him and he needs some more work, I, I believe. Interim Director of Safety and Security, Mr. Orlando Fremont. Congratulations, Orlando. And because Stephen has been our Supervisor of Maintenance, uh, we have talked and, uh, I am recommending or, or appointing our Interim Supervisor of Maintenance. He will be in charge of the daily operation of maintenance, which is what Stephen has been doing for, for many years now. But he'll be our Supervisor, our Interim Supervisor for Maintenance, Mr. Todd Leonard, and Todd's with us today also. So just to give you a little bit more update, we will be having the ribbon cutting on Bowley Elementary. That will be Thursday of this week at four o'clock. Would certainly invite you to, uh, if you can, to, to be there for that. It's an exciting time for us. This is, uh, three years in the process. And so, uh, we will be cutting the ribbon and students will be coming to school on Monday of next week at Bowley Elementary School. Last week, on Thursday and Friday, we had our back-to-school leadership conference with our principals, assistant principals, directors, supervisors, and, uh, some of our curriculum coordinators. And I will tell you, um, more excitement that I have seen from our administrators in several years. They were a buzz and they were very attentive of what we were, what we were going through and what we were preparing them for and, and everything. So I'm really excited about the beginning of this school year. And, uh, they actually had their first faculty meeting yesterday, today, tomorrow, and Thursday are district PD days. And Mr. Pate, um, our Title II, our special ed, all of our, our people in these departments have been working non-stop for, for a month and a half just preparing for these. Uh, I will say last week, we probably had over six hundred teachers in this building going through professional development. And today, tomorrow, and, uh, Thursday, we'll have that many also. So if you have a hard time finding a parking place, it's because we have a lot of teachers that are up here that are going through, uh, professional development. Uh, one last thing that I would like to mention to you. Um, we talked about the ESSR funds and for the buses and the air conditioning. We also got preapproval in our ESSR monies for some of these other items that we were waiting for. One is the, uh, East Washita Middle School Air Handlers to the tune of around a half a million dollars. Our Robinson Outdoor Classroom, eighty thousand dollars. Sterlington High School Outdoor Eating Facility and Richwood High School Outdoor Eating Facility. These are where we're covering their outside areas, uh, that they can come from the cafeteria and actually have meals out there. And that is four hundred thousand dollars each. And then, uh, we are also looking at trying to install bus cameras on every one of our buses for the, for a tune of about four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. That's going to be a yearly, uh, cost on that just to make sure that they, the programs are still working and everything. So, and this will be state-of-the-art cameras that we're putting on our buses also. The yearly, uh, cost is going to be around forty-five thousand. We are also in the process of, uh, securing some bus routing software. I know that Skeeter, Michelle have been looking at that along with Todd and that's going to be about sixty thousand dollars for our bus routing software. And one of the things that we have been waiting for the preapproval on, that we finally got, was the recruitment and retention pay for all of our full-time employees. And, uh, I was happy to announce that we did get preapproval for this. So in October, we will be giving all of our employees a two thousand dollar recruitment retention, uh, one-time check out of ESSR monies. And so very happy that, uh, we've got our out of ESSER monies, and so very happy that, uh, we've got our, our preapproval okay on that. Again, now it all goes into a budget revision, which we already had revised quite a bit of it, it's just a matter of submitting it, waiting for the state to give us a check off on the budget revision, and we are good to go. So, um, I think that's all I have for some updates for you.
Dr. Coker, on those awnings for Richwood and for Sterlington, uh, we, I know in my calendar, we have tentative to bid in September, is that still the plan?
We are going to try to do something September, October, that has to be completed by August of twenty twenty-three, so.
Go ahead and we'll try to put them on the agenda for the September meeting?
They will come September, October, I think we'll still have plenty of time.
Yeah.
But yes.
September, I'll try to put it on there.
Anybody else have any questions or answers? Do I have a motion to adjourn?